Sure.
Thank you. Uh, also, uh, staff here, we have Nathan Hall, uh, our associate planner with us, Marty Schmidt, zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, principal planner, Barb Swinson's son, uh, deputy clerk, and Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner back here. Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is approval October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Everybody here's had a chance to review those. Are there any additions or corrections? You'd like to submit? There's not? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. We've moved minutes as second.
I have a motion as second approved, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not in favor, may. Okay. Um, next thing on the agenda is, uh, variance or, um, mark X, uh, variance, uh, PL number two zero two one dash one oh two, requests for variance from required sixty-six foot of lot frontage on a public maintained street, section sixteen, Spring Lake Township, currently zone RR one. And Nathan, you gonna help us with this one?
Uh, correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening, commissioners. The, uh, subject property is located in section sixteen of Spring Lake Township. Uh, parcel is largely open with, uh, several productive acres. There is a flatland in the northeast of the property. Uh, the property, uh, is currently developed with a single family home and also, uh, two accessory buildings. The applicant and developer, Chris and Randy Kubis, proposed subdividing the parent parcel into a four lot residential development known as Marks and Farm. The applicants have applied to rezone and subdivide the parcel. Uh, after the application for preliminary and final plat was submitted, it was found that an adjacent roadway, uh, roadway to the north, one eighty-ninth Street East, is privately maintained and cannot be used to meet the sixty-six feet of public street frontage requirement, uh, found in section four dash two dash four of the Scott County zoning ordinance. Uh, therefore, the proposed plat layout does not provide, um, and does not meet that, uh, that requirement of the ordinance. Twenty forty comprehensive plan includes a future, uh, plan to connect County Road sixty-eight to Minnesota in the east, to Minnesota thirteen in the west. And proposed alignment is expected to run near or potentially within the southern boundary of the subdivision. Uh, Mr. Marks is required to dedicate sixty feet of roadway easement, uh, for the future alignment along the southern boundary of opposed lot three. Uh, the easement would abut, uh, lot four, but the alignment would likely move further south as the distance from Burgess Avenue, uh, increases. Uh, so therefore, lot four, uh, does not contain any roadway easement for the alignment. And, um, the roadway easement is not shown on this plat. That has not been revised, uh, to be added at this point. Um, the, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, the proposed lot four would abut, uh, the, uh, public, uh, roadway easement on both lot three and also the property immediately to the south, uh, where there's already been roadway easement dedicated, um, for the future alignment. However, the, uh, public easement would not be a public maintained roadway as is required by Scott County zoning ordinance. And if developed as a roadway in the future, it will be an arterial roadway, uh, that will not allow for direct driveway access. Uh, to address this issue, the applicant has proposed a driveway easement from Burgess Avenue, uh, for, uh, for the access to, uh, lot four. Uh, the county highway department has indicated the importance of the roadway easement dedication for the new alignment of County Road sixty-eight. The applicant is required to dedicate over half an acre of land for the alignment. Uh, there have been two instances in the relatively recent past where variances under required sixty-six feet of lot frontage have been, uh, granted. Uh, once in two thousand five and again in two thousand fifteen. In both circumstances, additional roadway easement was dedicated for future roadway extensions, uh, that would provide public frontage once the roadways would be constructed. Uh, Scott County zoning, uh, staff has indicated they would be supportive of the applicant's request, uh, per the criteria listed in the staff report, and with the following conditions: uh, one, that the applicant shall dedicate the south sixty feet of lot three, block one, to Scott County as roadway easement. And two, that the applicant shall provide an access easement to the, to Burgess Avenue for the benefit of lot four, block one. Uh, Spring Lake Township recommended approval of the plat as it was presented at their October twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, Mr. Folsky is here tonight to speak regarding the variance request. Uh, the applicant is also present to speak regarding the request. And, uh, of course, you know, Mr. Chair, there may be neighbors of the proposed subdivision prepared to speak, uh, to the request as well. An email from the neighboring, uh, property owner was, uh, included in the commissioner's packet earlier. I'll certainly stand by for any questions.
Any questions from the support for Nathan on this variance? I have one thing I want to ask you. Uh, sixty-eighth, uh, County Road sixty-eight will be coming through eventually because there's long-term planning to connect, uh, on the south side of this, uh, this property. So it will have a public road eventually when the County Road sixty-eight gets extended through here, which is just that ends not too far to the east and to the west of Tiantown or Ninetieth Street.
Uh, correct, Mr. Mr. Chair, the, um, I can't speak too heavily to the transportation, um, planning issues, but that is the, uh, planned alignment. There is three miles there between, uh, where sixty-eight currently ends and where Highway thirteen is, and this is one of these missing links there.
Long-term planning has always showed sixty-eight going through there.
Yes, that's what's shown.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a public hearing? Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Do I have a motion to close the, uh, public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And what is your wishes on this variance?
Chairman, um, based on the eight hardship, based on the eight hardship criteria for granting a variance, I recommend approval of the request variance for the required sixty-six feet of lot frontage on a publicly maintained street, knowing the two conditions of approval, also knowing that Spring Lake Township has also approved.
Have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion as second to approve, uh, variance. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the variance has been approved. Anything else, uh, Greg or Marty for the board?
Nothing for Board of Adjustment, please.
So I have a motion, calls the Board of Adjustment.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second to close. All in favor, say aye.
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 Or adjustments called. If you're over to planning.
Good evening, and welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission Meeting, November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, at the Spring Lake Township building we're holding this evening. Uh, we'll start with the roll call. Uh, Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Robbie?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Hough?
Here.
Uh, not present this evening, Commissioner Henshaw, Commissioner Hartman, and Commissioner Johnson. Um, also present this evening, uh, we have Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, uh, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, uh, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, is on the other side of that podium, I believe. In addition, Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner, is here with us this evening. Our, uh, first item of business is the approval of the October eleventh Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All the commissioners have been sent copies of minutes and opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, October eleventh, twenty twenty-one Planning Advisory Board Commission meeting.
Oh, second.
I have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Watson. I have a second by Commissioner Huber. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vo- voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. The next item is our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The items on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the planning commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be moved from the consent agenda to be considered separately. The first item is the WIC rezoning, it's, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine nine. It's a request rezoning of seventy-one point five six acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District. This is located in section twenty-two of Sand Creek Township, the current zoning is A-one. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay? Second item is item three two. This is the Marks and rezoning and preliminary plat, number twenty twenty-one dash zero six five. Uh, it's a request rezoning of ten acres from rural residential reserve district to rural residential two reserve district, uh, single family district. Second part of the request is a request for preliminary plat, the final plat of Marks and Farm consisting of four lots on ten acres. Location is section sixteen, Spring Lake Township, current zoning is rural residential one. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay? At this time, I will ask the, uh, board for, to approve the two items on the consent agenda. Once they have been approved, these items will be approved with the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Robbie. Do I have any discussion? No further discussion, I will call for a voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved, and these two items have been approved. So if you were here for these two items, one of these two items, they have been approved. Our next item is a public hearing. It's East Laredo Estates, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash zero five zero. And, uh, it is also a two-part hearing, request rezoning of two hundred and fifteen acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District. Second part is a request for preliminary plat and final plat of East Laredo Estates consisting of two lots and two outlots and two hundred and fifty-nine acres. Uh, the location is sections nineteen, twenty, and thirty in, uh, Bell Plain Township and current zoning is A-one. And making the, uh, staff presentation this, uh, this evening is Greg Wagner, Wagner, our principal planner. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Um, there you go. Okay, um, on the screen you will see the site location map showing the subject property, uh, for rezoning, uh, highlighted in red. Uh, as indicated, this property exists in parts of sections nineteen, twenty, uh, and thirty of Bell Plain Township. Um, I'll explain the difference between the rezoning and the, uh, plat acreage here in a minute, but the rezoning, uh, is two hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and fifteen point zero nine acres, and the plat is two hundred and fifty-two point zero nine acres, so difference is thirty-seven acres. Um, Randy, Chris Kubis, the applicants are requesting the rezoning of two hundred and fifteen acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District. Um, the difference in the zoning districts, so I, I do want to let the commission know that we have received some calls from the neighbors, and I spoke to, uh, a few of them. Um, just so everybody understands, the A-one and A-three districts are both districts in Scott County that are a density of one dwelling per forty acres. So there is no difference as far as the number of building sites between the two districts. The difference between A-one and A-three is that the A-one district has a minimum lot size of forty acres, where the A-three district has a minimum lot size of one acre. Um, so this is a snippet of kind of southern Bell Plain Township. The A-one zoning is everything you see in gray. The A-three district is everything you see in the blue. Um, you can see, it may be hard for the, the audience to see, but, um, this is a common rezoning that has been in place for, uh, since at least the nineties. Um, and generally what the reason for this is, uh, a farmer or a large landowner who has a home or wants to build a home on their property, uh, is looking to put that home on a smaller piece. Um, instead of forty acres, they would prefer, usually it's like five to ten acres, uh, splitting off the existing farmstead. Um, so we have a couple examples. You can see here, there's two parcels. Uh, these individuals had eighty acres here. Um, down here was an actual development where the landowner had about three hundred acres, so he took that three hundred acres, kind of clustered the homes, built a road, put them in there. But for the most part, what we get with this rezoning is the farmer, landowner, saying, you know, for mortgage reasons or just to have a smaller lot around the house, and they want to sell the ag land, um, usually five to ten acres, they rezoned to the A-three. It allows the county and the township to track where these densities have gone from, so this doesn't get confusing as these smaller lots are being created. So the area we're talking about is right here. Um, so we have this eighty acres, which is A-one, that's proposed, proposed for rezoning. And then we have a large chunk of several parcels right here, so some of them are A-one. Uh, but you can see there's, this is the thirty-seven acres, uh, right here, that was previously rezoned from A-one to A-three, when this ten acre lot, uh, an existing farmstead, was split off. So, uh, about forty-seven acres at one time was rezoned and, and split off this ten acre lot. So that tells us, tells county staff that some of this acreage has been used and that building right has been pulled, so that we don't have people getting more building rights than, than they should. Um, the other thing, I'll, I'll just point out the other color on the map here. The, the dark gray or black that you see here and up here, um, that is A-two, which is agricultural woodland. Um, there's, there was some confusion in some of the conversations that I had that parts of Bell Plain Township is one in ten. That is not the case. Um, Bell Plain Township is one in forty, except for these areas that were agricultural woodlands. Um, those areas which are wooded or unproductive soils have to have at least seventy-five percent wooded or unproductive. They were then able to rezone and get one home per ten acres. That rezoning is no longer allowed in Scott County. That was something, again, back in the nineties, early two thousands, but ten years ago, when the comp plan changed, that, that A-two zoning was phased out. So Bell Plain Township is completely one home per forty acres. You, you can't do that one in ten anymore. Um, I want to zoom into this area just so everybody can see what kind of happened. Okay. So these are the two five acre lots that we're talking about when we're talking about the plat. Back in nineteen ninety-one, the, this ten acres, this ten acres, and this ten acres, that thirty acre area was rezoned to A-two, which gave the landowner at the time the ability to go to that one in ten. So these, these three ten acre parcels were created, this, leaving this five acres here, this five acres here, and this five acres here. Those, those five acre lots were created as remnant pieces as a result of this A-two zoning. So that's when these parcels were created. So they, they are legal separate parcels today. They're just not buildable, um, because there's no land density associated with them. What the applicant is requesting to do here is essentially take this eighty acres, which has two building rights on it, because it's vacant farmland, under one per forty, because they're across the road, it's adjacent, they can take those building rights and shift them across the road. As an example, that's what happened to this five acre parcel, because this five acres has a house on it. Um, in two thousand two, this land was rezoned from A-one to A-three, and this building right that was here was put on this five acres. That was all platted. So what's being requested tonight is the same thing, taking the two building rights here, moving them to existing parcels that are already there, um, plating them, which then makes them buildable parcels.
Mr. Wagner, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How does, how is that recorded, so that staff knows that the building rights have gone?
Sure.
To those other parcels?
So, yeah, Mr. Chair, so, um, essentially, in, in the, in the rezoning request, we have a description of what was rezoned. Um, it gets, it gets recolor coded on this map from gray to blue. So what that does is when somebody calls us and says, well, I have this eighty acres or I have this other piece of property, we see that something was changed there. So then we can go back and pull the rezoning document and say, okay, what was changed there? The other way that this is, um, identified is through the actual plat. So this is the plat. Um, these two lots are being identified as lot one and lot two, which by ordinance are buildable. The eighty acres here is being platted as outlot A. An outlot by county ordinance is a non-buildable parcel. So there's two things that tell us that something happened here, and we can go back and look at the record from this public hearing and, and the board action, and, and we can identify what happened and that density has been moved. So that's how we track that. Um, the other area of the property that's being included in the plat is being platted as outlot B. Um, going back to the zoning map, as I said, the area around this lot was already rezoned. Um, um, there's this fifty-four acres right here, there's a forty acre lot right here, and then there's an eight acre and eleven acre parcel that are, these two are actually landlocked. So when we started speaking with the landowner and applicants, we looked at this area too, which was very confusing as far as what was there for density. So through this plat, we're, we're plating that as an outlot, and we're recording in the, uh, the plat, uh, meeting minutes here, that there would be, based on acreage, three building rights remaining on outlot B based on its size. Now, the applicant would have to come back through this process and replat those lots, request a replat of, of that property to actually create those parcels. They have not requested that. We don't know if that's going to be tomorrow, five years from now, ten, ten years from now, but they would have that ability. Um, but, but essentially, that's what an outlot means. So at this point, two of these building rights are being moved here, and then this, this is essentially just being platted as one parcel just to remove some lot lines and get rid of these landlocked situations, just to kind of clean that area up. So I, I hope that provided some overview, um, just to kind of why we do what we do, how we track it, and just how densities can be moved. Oh, this, this was the plat that I showed you earlier. Um, yep.
And outlot B, again, there's like three, uh, units that could go in there eventually down the line, but it's an outlot right now.
It's an outlot.
Okay.
Yeah, as those parcels exist today, the forty, the fifty-four?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, they have the density there to build. They would just have to replat.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Robbie?
Greg, I got a quick question. Could you go back to that colored slide, the blue? There you go. You said that was a five acre lot, next to the one and two, uh, go over to?
Right there.
There, that one?
Yep.
It's a five acre, and there's a residence on that property?
Yep, I can go to the aerial photo and zoom in. Yep, so this, this five acres right here, like I said, this was two thousand two that this area here was rezoned, A-one to A-three. These two parcels were platted as, as outlot, so they have no more building eligibility. The building eligibility was moved to this five acre parcel to make that buildable. So what the applicants are requesting tonight is essentially to move these two building rights down to these lots there and, and do the same thing.
Okay, wait, we, there'll be a point for, uh, uh, the public to come up and, and ask questions. Thank you for asking that. Go ahead, Ms. Wagner.
Um, so lastly, um, before I stand for other questions, um, but we, we did receive this township recommendation form, um, today, and a copy was put in your packet, so this was just received by the county today. Um, so the applicant did appear at the township meeting last week, uh, with the request to rezone and plat. Uh, the township on this form checked the box that they have no recommendation but will forward the request to the planning commission. We responded to that request to the township clerk. Uh, her response back to us was that she would reach out to one of the supervisors to see if they could attend the meeting tonight. Um, at just after six o'clock, I received an email from, uh, the township board chair, Tony Cornder. Um, to summarize that email, the board, the town board made no decision on the plat as it predates the current, uh, town board and is meeting, but is meeting county requirement, or meeting requirements of the county ordinance, so they felt it was best to pass this on to the county.
Thank you for the clarification on this.
And I would, uh, staff has recommended approval and would stand for any additional questions.
Are there any further questions? There, uh, won't be further questions, please be available. Okay, this is a public hearing. At this point, if you have a question or comment, you can approach the podium. There is a sign-up sheet at the podium, please sign in and start your comments with your name.
My question is this here, as far as, I, there's actually two deeds on my property. We purchased an additional acre, so he doesn't have that ten acres out in front. I got eleven point fifteen acres from a ten point six. We purchased an additional acre out in front of our house so that it wouldn't get into our leach lines. We brought our septic system out in front, which goes right to his field. And I don't want to see somebody building in front of me. I didn't buy that land to have that happen.
Okay, and, and where is your land?
Mine is, would be the first driveway.
Okay, we're gonna, we stand for homeboy here with showing where exactly your lot is.
It would be this one to the first tier.
Right here.
Where it shows this.
Watch out, watch out.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The one I'm pointing at right here.
Right. That little tip that comes up there, that goes straight across there. That doesn't come up.
There's a microphone, there's a microphone up there.
Thank you.
Oh, there is it. I don't want that.
So, so your lot is right there adjacent to one of the, to five acre lot?
When they came out and did a property survey deal, they put that up in my front yard, and that's not where it belongs. If they go off, the county is supposed to have been putting those two lots, those two deeds as one, and bring that, to square that off. That's why we purchased that, so that it was just a squared off section there, so he doesn't have that little tip that goes into my yard. Hasn't had that since ninety-six. It's not something that just happened. This has been there for a long time. We bought that land in ninety-six, in Granite, or ninety-one, we bought the land.
Right.
Ninety-six, we built the house and closed on that in December. That little tip that comes into my yard is no longer there. You get the other deed, they said, on my taxes, I'm paying for eleven point fifteen acres.
Right.
Instead of ten point six that was original. But he doesn't have that extra acre out in front of me.
Okay, so, so where did that acre come from, I guess, my question, I'm trying to understand. You're saying it's out of that five acre lot there?
Yes.
So there's, there's two deeds over that particular lot right there?
On my lot, there's two deeds for my land.
Now, I'm, I, but where did the additional acreage come from?
It came from that parcel out in front of me. Um.
He, he can show what the?
Right there.
So that's where the acreage came from?
Take that from that corner where that line goes down, I'm sure that separates the two, and take that straight across, and that will take you to my land. We purchased an additional acre.
In ninety-one?
In ninety, no, ninety-six.
When you built?
When we built, because we took our mound, we didn't want to put it in the back because of the fact that that used to be a wild area, a pond, duck pond back in the day, so it's really no substantial ground there. There's pretty much mush and marsh and decomposed.
Right, so what your point is, is that five acre parcel is not a five acre parcel?
No, it's not. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and so you're saying that, because you have an acre, you added an acre to your town-
Yes, you did, yes.
You added ten, and now, so you're saying that's not a five acre parcel at all?
No, no, and where they marked it, when they came out and did their survey, they went off of just the one original-
Right.
-one, without adding the extra one for the extra deed. I got two deeds, one parcel.
And what is your address at your parcel?
One one zero zero five, West Two Sixty.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name?
Deborah Erickson.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, and have you- this is the first you've talked to the county about it? You haven't said anything, or have you contacted them?
No.
You thought out when this came up?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, we'll get staff to get an answer on this.
And I mean, I've got papers that, and I've had a gentleman, that's not here, but I mean, he's gone in and he's talked with somebody at the county that he's friends with, and they're supposed to have been working on this to make, to get it in a county where it's a proper deed to the land, to combine the two together to make one.
Right, so you have two deeds on your property right now?
Yes, but like I said, we've been paying for eleven point fifteen acres for, since ninety-six on our taxes. That's what we do.
Right, okay, well, first off, I appreciate you coming up and bringing this to light, because we need to find, we need to have an answer on this, to find out-
Why?
What, why?
Yeah.
And what the proper lines are here.
Yes.
And so we will find that-
And if I had known they were going to do this, I could have gone out there and told them at that point.
Right.
That we've got the land state from the original-
Right.
-time that, when it first started all this, when we bought the land and everything. Those stakes are there, they've been there, we've never removed them.
And is that the stakes from when you bought the additional acre? Right, so that's what you're saying, those stakes are still there?
Yes, they are.
The land state?
We've never moved them, we've never touched them.
Okay.
We got our trees planted in there for a purpose.
Okay, well, we will find an answer to that, and I'll go to Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so this issue is known to the county, specifically the county surveyor's office. They are aware of Ms. Erickson's issue and the property line dispute, or whatever we want to call it. So I did speak with county surveyor Dan Wormer today. I do have his phone number, if you have information for him. But they are aware of this. The way this process works, the planning commission is a recommending body. The county surveyor reviews the plat, so when we go to the next page, or the next- Well, so the final document would look like this, with signatures. So the individuals that sign the plat are the applicant surveyor, the township, the county surveyor's office. So the applicant surveyor reviews and draws up a plat similar to this. It is submitted to the county surveyor's office. The county surveyor reviews the legal description, and then, once they feel comfortable that what is being shown is correct, the county surveyor must sign this plat. In addition to the county surveyor, the county attorney reviews the plat and must sign the plat. The applicant is required to provide title work to the county attorney's office. That title work must show clear ownership to the property. So if there is a dispute like this, that would cause an issue, the county attorney's office would generally call that out, either them or the county surveyors. So this plat cannot be recorded until all those parties would sign. So that work still needs to be done, but again, your role as a recommending body and the role of the county attorney and county surveyor are to review for these types of issues.
Okay, could you connect up the Harrison here, and give her the information to contact the county surveyor directly, so you can talk directly with the county surveyor about this information, and maybe even meet with them, so that they have all this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think another person that is going to speak, I have the phone number, I was going to give this to her, but if they want to share his number, he is happy to speak with both of them.
That would be wonderful, because I think that this is an important issue that needs to be resolved, or go forward. Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Greg, so the piece she's talking about is where she's squaring off that parcel, so go back-
Right here.
Right there, that little piece there, squaring that off. If that does, if that's her land, then these parcels have five acres apiece? Or is that what has to be figured out?
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Huber, so if, sorry, I'm going to zoom into that area. So it's kind of this line here.
Yeah.
So, right now, outside, not including what would be dedicated as right of way, this parcel shows four point eight two acres. If there would need to be a correction along this line, and this parcel gets reduced, it would not be a significant concern, because as I stated in the presentation, in the A3 district, the minimum lot size is one acre, and the ability to locate a home and have two septic sites. Septic sites have been identified kind of to the west of the proposed home location. So if there needed to be a correction, and this lot resulted in something like three acres, probably still going to be okay.
I mean, actually, it could be one acre, but they're almost five acres.
Right, but based on where the septic sites are, we're probably at least two and a half acres.
But it needs to be accurate, I mean, it needs to be correct, obviously, with this. Thank you very much. The podium is still open, if anyone else would like to make a comment.
So, my name is Michelle, I'm on the opposite corner of the property, eleven two oh three. Okay, so I don't know where to start, because Chris has made a mess, and if you look online, the properties are four point seven five and four point eight two. Okay, well, Chris also has a property line up to a tree line, which is both information, because I know one has a tree line, and anywhere from ten to twenty feet away from the property line. And then according to Chris, that, yeah, you guys can build whatever you want, but for water drainage, it wouldn't matter. Lights, they can have lights in our homes. I don't think so. You know, we've lived there, we've done our improvements, that they should just all step on us? So for drainage, there's going to be no regulation? You have two houses up there, they can have their water draining into our front yard of Deb's and mine? Is that fair? But the property line is a huge issue. It's not up to the tree line, and you know that, Chris. I mean, that's what comes out, anybody comes out and takes a picture.
Okay, so we will get the property lines and the surveys done properly. So wherever the trees are at versus property lines, I'm not sure, but that will be done properly, I can assure you of that. And the county surveyor is going to be aware of this, particularly with that. As for the, any drainage from the lots, I know that Mr. Wagner can talk to that and talk about any development, because it's just a general item of planning, that you can't change the water flow off of a lot to another lot and move the water off that way. So I know that there are specific regulations regarding that development.
Well, that's a concern to me, though, because I had to do a swell in my front yard, because the Cube would not do anything about the farmland, including him going twenty feet over my property line, and he had cut down my trees about ten, fifteen years ago, but he would not do anything about that water from his, you know, field going out to my front yard. So I had to cut down trees and do a swell, and my neighbor, who was here that had done all of it, is here, if you would like to talk to him about it, because it was about a four thousand dollar project. So this was, you know, something that I should not have to get any more stress out about, with somebody, you know, stuff being drained down my way. And then with Deb, you know, she doesn't need anything drained down her way, I mean, it's just common sense.
Okay, well, we can address those concerns for you, so that you don't-
And the property lines, I hope?
Yes, and the property lines as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Wagner?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I talked to Michelle earlier this summer, and so part of the issue for this board is the lots are there. They were, as I told Michelle, I did not talk to Ms. Erickson, but these two parcels were created as a result of her parcel getting created. That's how they were severed, so they were essentially created in nineteen ninety-one. That's when they were created. There's been questions about their being put up for sale, but they are parcels that are already there, so the landowner can buy and sell them already. With a plat, the developer is required to show that the lots would be buildable, meaning show a house pad that meets setbacks, and show primary and alternate septic locations that, you know, that will perk and will work, so that somebody buying the property can be assured that they are buying a buildable parcel. So as I zoom in, the property lines are the darker lines, and then the dashed lines would be the required setbacks. So a hundred feet from the center of the road, sixty feet from the rear lot line on the south, thirty feet from the side. The drainage thing, so you can see maybe underneath here the contours, this is the high point of the area up near the road, so you can see the contours, and then the circular contour, it's basically a hill, and it, you know, does flow south towards both of the neighbors. That's existing drainage. So if this project stopped tonight, that existing drainage would still be there. As the, if this moves forward and gets approved, a buyer of either of these parcels would need to, at that point, apply for a building permit. It's through that permit that the county and the Scottsdale Water Office review how that site would be developed. This is just a potential location, but a buyer of the property could choose to put the house down here, or they could put it here. We don't know until that person buys it. As long as they meet setback, they can move that around. So they could show us a grading plan for this house, but if the buyer chooses to put the house here or here, that grading plan doesn't work. So it's really through the building permit review process when we review that. We have made the Scottsdale Water Office aware of this plat. They review for wetlands, there are no wetlands on either of these two parcels, but they do review the building permits for drainage and erosion control. So it's really through the building permit process where they would become involved and try and work with a applicant, you know, a landowner who's going to build a house here, to try and work with them on where does their drainage go, how is that controlled? So it's more so through that process. The only other thing I would add, we made our water resources engineer aware of this project as well, based on Michelle's concerns. It's not a lot, but the rate of runoff from a farm field is greater than the rate of runoff from a fully vegetated, grass seeded yard. So there might be some small reduction in runoff if somebody builds and plants this into a grass yard. It's not going to be a lot, it's not going to solve the problem, but it might be better than what there is now with just raw ag land. So our water folks are aware of this project, and, you know, again, would review at time of building permit, to see if there's something that can be done to improve water flow off of these two parcels.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Appreciate that. Are there any more comments on this?
My name is Peggy DeVoto. I live on Laredo. My question is, if we change, what is it, A1, as I understand it now, the buildable lot, one acre, so what's to stop somebody from buying that and putting two houses on that, or three houses on that?
No, only one density per lot. So you cannot, regardless of the building, you have to understand that only one building density is moving for each of those lots, and that's tied to the eighty acres across the street.
He can't move, he can't move his building density from his outlot to there, is that correct?
That is-
There's three building densities in Outlot B.
Right, he does have three other building densities there.
Can he take that, one of those, and move it over into those two smaller?
That's not the application, that's for us.
As Mr. Vaughn have said, so if I understand your question, you're asking about these three, and can they be moved here?
Yes, or even-
County ordinance allows one home per parcel.
Okay, so-
So, yeah, they couldn't put multiple?
There's no way they can do a multiple.
Right.
Because right there, that's-
All right, that's a good question.
That's my only.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, this time, or comments? Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion?
Motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbie, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion or action.
Mr. Chair, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning, preliminary plat, final plat of East Laredo Estates, consisting of two lots and two outlots, and two hundred fifty-two point zero nine acres, noting that this recommendation is subject to approval of the conditions listed in the staff report. It must be satisfactory, addressed prior to county board consideration of the project, and noting that town board has not made any recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, is there any further discussion before a call for vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Move forward to the recommendation to the county board for approval. Thank you for your comments this evening, and make sure that the county surveyor does get that information, and they have the contact information. Our next item is a public hearing for the Schiper Helport DUP review, twenty twenty dash U of four date. It's a review of the conditional use permit to operate a helport, located in Section Twenty-Six, Cedar Lake Township, Rural Financial One C. Tonight, I believe, our zoning administrator, Marty Schmitz, will be making the presentation. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Greg has pulled up aerial photo showing Mr. Schiper's property. This aerial photograph does not include the helport, obviously, which was finished up in construction roughly April of this year. Mr. Schiper received his license from Mid Knot Aeronautics in May of this year, and started flying to and from the property in May. He provided a flight log, which you received as part of your application information. In that flight log, there's approximately twenty-six flights in and out of the air helport. About two-thirds of those flights utilize the south flight path for either departure or approach, and of that final third, it was pretty much evenly split between the north flight path and the west flight path. And if you recall back during the hearings on this project, it was felt that the south flight path was the most, least offensive flight path, because it didn't go as close to some of the homes that Mr. Schiper has been utilizing that south flight path quite a bit more. However, when certain weather conditions are present, for safety reasons, he has to utilize the north and the west flight path. Up until today, staff had not received any complaints regarding the operations of the helport. We have gotten no calls from any of the neighbors. You did get a letter that was emailed from Elizabeth Brandt, here with your packet today, that was received at eight ten tonight. I did give Mr. Schiper a copy of that email, so maybe he can address some of the things in there. We haven't had opportunity to talk about it, or look at any of this stuff, so what we're doing here is doing our review. It was a requirement under Condition Two of its conditional use permit, so it is necessary as part of Mr. Schiper's conditional use permit to do an annual review here. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Schiper, who can talk a little bit more about the facility and operations there, and then if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schifer. Good evening, Mr. Schaper. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schieper. Good evening, Mr. Schieper.
Good evening, Chair, commissioners. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. So, first off, yeah, just walking in here is when I received Mrs. Brandt's email. So, you know, for today, zero complaints. I'd like to point out, in Wildwood Pond itself, since we've last spoken and met, we've had four houses just in our neighborhood sell. Four new neighbors that knew nothing about this, four new neighbors that moved in with not knowing anything about it. All four of those neighbors would, and some of them are very close, all four of them would say, "We wouldn't have even known if you hadn't brought it up." They all wrote letters as well. I think you guys received multiple letters from people stating that it's non-existent. It's benign. It's actually- Can I walk up here?
Yeah.
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 I heard a little loud trouble.
Yeah.
All right. So, when I'm using the west approach departure path, okay, I have, one second.
Right.
The south is kind of south, that's a little bit, okay? The north, I'll get to Elizabeth shortly. The north, there's a power line.
Yep.
Hold on right here. I use the north. I specifically come over the edge of this water, okay? And at that point, at that point, all of those, I own all of these lots as well. At this point, I come up over the water, I'm over my property. So, there's several things wrong with Miss Brandt's email. So, number one, I've never, I've never flown over her house, okay? I only use that north approach departure path when I feel it necessary. When I'm up there flying, and I'm, foreflight telling me the wind's about a one-five-zero at nine knots, even if it's just nine knots, I'm gonna come in using the north approach departure path. I'm gonna do what's safest. Where Miss Brandt's at, you know, she's surrounded by trees. Up on that hill, I don't know if there's ever been zero wind, to be honest with you, up on that hill. But, the wind might be different down there. She's, she might not feel much wind down there, but I can assure you it's different up on top of that hill, and I'm gonna follow foreflight. I'm gonna follow the safest and smartest things there. When you look at the dates and times that she posts, I can assure you that three of those are definitely not me. So, I've never flown over her house. I can assure you, I did not fly on three of those dates that she is claiming that I did. And then she talks about my daughter on Facebook. I have two daughters, and neither one of them are on Facebook. So, I'm not sure who she's creeping on, but that's not right. But, my kids are not on Facebook. She also talks about more than my helicopter. I honestly don't know anybody else personally that owns a helicopter. My knowledge, no one has snuck in and used my heliport without my knowledge. Is it possible? Yeah. I'm not always home. It's possible. But, I just wanted to point out those several things with her claims. So, I don't know, Marty, what else you would like me to address, if anything, on Elizabeth's comment? But, yeah. That's unfortunate that we got that. That's, I don't know if there's anything in there that's actually accurate. So, with reviewing the conditions, you know, there was, I wrote some letter of recommendations. I don't know if you, you guys read this stuff before you get here?
Absolutely.
All right. So, you want me to run down the list?
We have very boring-
What's that?
We have very boring lives, though. We read everything that comes before us.
All right. All right. You know, there's, after Elizabeth's email, you know, I know there's one recommendation that I was gonna, you know, to get done flying and chart everything, it's not that big a deal. But, I was like, well, why is it necessary if there's no complaints? Ever seen Elizabeth complain? I would suggest that I keep monitoring the flight paths that I use.
I was just gonna say, you probably would wanna retain that, just because it gives you an opportunity to respond to something like this.
Exactly.
Because you're not gonna get it right then, if you say, "I wasn't, it wasn't me."
Right. Right. Exactly. And, yeah, I can imagine one more thing with Elizabeth's email here, you know. Marty asked, Marty thought it'd be smart if Bruce Vasile, who's the closest homeowner to my heliport, Marty thought it'd be smart that Bruce came as well, in case you guys had any questions for him, because he is so close to the heliport. Well, Bruce flew with me on Saturday, yeah, on Saturday, and I did use, it was a nine knot wind that I was reading, out of the south. I used the north approach departure path coming in. But, when I came in, Bruce was out there videotaping me. So, he just brought this up to me. He's like, "Doug, I videotaped you. I can prove that exactly how I come in, and I can assure you, I never go over Elizabeth's property." All right. So, conditions number one, a letter stating that I'm in compliance, my flight log. So, either way, I think we kinda just discussed that. We just, well, I mean, we're not, you guys aren't voting here. This is, Marty wanted me to come in and just discuss these items?
Yeah.
Just kind of-
Right. So, this is not a public hearing. We did not send out notices to adjacent property owners. This is just a staff planning commission review of Mr. Schieper's operations. We didn't feel it was necessary to send out notices to anybody.
Right.
Partly because we hadn't heard from many of the neighbors since he was utilizing the facility.
And in your, in your comments, you did make reference that there's some conditions that you would like to be removed, and that's what you're presenting now, that we're at right now.
That's what it sounds like where we're at right now. So, maybe if you had some questions on the actual operation, we should talk about that first.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, question from Robbie. If I can. Maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but Doug's letter here is asking for some approvals. If we do decide, doesn't the surrounding property owners need to be aware of that? Because now we're changing-
Right.
The conditions here.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbie. I think Mr. Schieper just wants to get some thoughts and ideas on these things right now. He realizes that in order to change any of the conditions in the permit, he would have to come forward through a public hearing process where neighbors are notified.
This is a staff review.
Yeah. Yeah. Just, yes.
And I understand Marty thought it'd be smart to get together and discuss all of this all for, before the notices go out to neighbors, and hopefully it doesn't turn into what it turned into last time.
Chairman, maybe Mr. Schieper can go over the reasons why he would like these conditions of approval removed. I think there's one, seven, eight, nine-
Thirteen.
Thirteen. If you could get in some detail as to why, we can start with one. Maybe you can tell us why you don't wanna have this conditional use permit reviewed on annual basis.
So, I think we just discussed number one a little bit, and me logging all the flight operations, I think we're all in agreement as of right now, because of Elizabeth's email that, yes, I need to keep monitoring a flight log, and that's fine. It's not a big deal. As far as coming in here, once a year, you know, I guess with zero complaints and knowing what, knowing what all of the close neighbors that I, that you guys have letters from, what they were all saying is, "Doug, we don't even notice it. It's benign. We don't even hear you." If that's the case, and that's what I believe is the case, do we need to review this once a year is all. That's why I brought it up. But, I'm guessing at this point, if we do make some changes, we're probably definitely gonna wanna review in another year, and so I think number one just stays as is, is my opinion right now.
You know, if you, if we would consider any of these for changes, because it's a different environment than, to see what would happen. And the other point on this, too, is this is a new use, and so we're all learning about it. And your experience being the first person to have this, in a sense, and, you know, you're building a case over time. And as we go through and discuss these, I think there is a value to come back and point them.
Mr. Chairman, a question from Marty regarding conditional use permit. I mean, if we change conditions, definitely has to come back in, and have a public hearing. But, down the line, would that become more administrative? As just far as-
Administrative.
You guys looking at it and see if everything's okay.
So, yeah, right now, we have Condition Two that requires the planning commission to do a review annually of the permit. There could be some softening of that language, where the planning commission may do a review of the permit at your discretion, so you could determine based on complaints, based on phone calls, do we need to do a review this year, or do we not? So, we can look at different things there, but to take it out would be something that would have to be done through the permit, or even amend it to soften the language in it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the type of thing we could do as a part of an amendment. I don't know that it's necessary to come back every year.
Oh, that's okay.
But, I think it's good to have something in there that if we wanna review it. And really, that's the case with any conditional use permit out there. If this board heard enough issues or concerns about a particular use, staff could schedule a review of that permit with the planning commission.
And I think we have done that in the past.
Yeah. We have done that, where we've had a number of complaints.
But, if there is a, an issue that's impacting surrounding property.
I'm sorry. Keep going.
Yeah. Sorry.
No worries. Obviously, number one stays. I guess it's going down my list here. Number two, that, I think we've already discussed that. So, down to number seven. Number five, I'm not worried about it one bit, so I don't know if we really needed to even discuss it. Five, I should've just said, probably okay as is. If at any point in the future I was ever gonna move or subdivide up the property differently, maybe then we address it at that point. But, don't need to worry about it now. Seven, I mean, it's up to you. I mean, obviously, all of this is up to you, but-
What is your thinking on this? What was your concern?
Seven's definitely not one of my most important ones. So, seven, my thinking is, well, you know, my main thinking on a lot of this is, we all produce noise, whether it's a lawnmower, leaf blower, whatever it is, motorcycle, snowmobile, doesn't matter. We all produce noise. And, you know, in the past, a year ago, I provided a lot of documentation, you know, from Purdue University, and you ended up hiring an acoustician out of New Jersey, and you guys had your own acoustician. You know, we were, we were able to prove that there's a lot of noise producers out there that produce more noise than my helicopter. And, well, some of this, I just kinda feel like I'm discriminated a little bit against, just because my method of transportation is a little bit different. You know, we don't, we don't go to people with motorcycles and say, "How many times a year you can use your motorcycle," or, "What roads you gotta take to exit your house," you know? So, for this here, you know, no other helicopters. You know, understanding MNDOT guidelines and FAA regulations, my heliport is a forty-foot diameter. So, to have the fear that another helicopter, which I already told you, I don't know anybody personally that owns another helicopter. I really don't. So, this really isn't a big deal. But, with a forty-foot diameter helipad, that means that no other helicopter could touch that helipad unless the diameter of its rotor system was forty feet or less, okay? Mine's thirty-seven foot six. So, Huey's not gonna go in there and land. A Blackhawk's not gonna go in there and land. Things that are much noisier than my helicopter, not gonna go in there and land. So, as long as I didn't expand upon the size of that heliport, other larger, louder helicopters would be breaking FAA regs if they tried to land on my heliport. So, I guess in my mind, I was just, I'm not worried about number seven at all. It doesn't really affect me.
Mr. Chairman, regarding your helicopter, I mean, there's different types of helicopters. Some are much quieter than others.
Yeah.
And I assume what I've been hearing, that yours is pretty quiet compared to, like, a Huey or something like that, a military helicopter, which are very noisy.
Yeah.
So, yours is probably, I don't know, one of the haptis, sound of a Huey. I don't know that.
You know, my helicopter is, there's three classifications of helicopters, of small, medium, and large, basically. My helicopter is deemed to be a small helicopter, okay? And, you know, Bell Technologies, you guys have that information from a year ago, but Bell Technologies showed the maximum decimal level that you could produce with my specific aircraft. And, that's, I think it's ninety point seven decimals is the max. And that means that you're pulling max collective, you're in a left bank, working on it as hard as that machine could possibly take, which is way different than this, coming in nice and calm. So, my decimal level's much less than nine point seven.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, seven, we can move on from that one. Obviously, we'll think about it. We can discuss it again if you guys want to. It's today, it's not a big deal to me. Someday, it just seems goofy that, let's say someday I did have a buddy with a helicopter, the same or smaller than mine, that, hey, I'm gonna shoot up and swing over. Yeah, it'd be cool, but I don't have that potential today.
And I think part of the concern there was, there was so much effort that went into developing the conditional use permit, the approach departure paths. You're conscious of your neighbors. You understand where they're coming from. But, if you have a buddy that's coming in, is he going to know, "I have to take this approach departure path or that one?" Or do they end up coming over? Are they coming over somebody's house? Is it a louder helicopter? I think those are the types of concerns that we would need to work through if we are going to look at amending that, that condition. Agreed?
Um, eight and nine are, eight and nine are definitely the toughest for me. This is a, how many times a year can I do this? And times a day. Those, you know, the, as far as time a day, I mean, I, most of the time, I don't get home from work till seven o'clock. And, especially in the summertime, it's light out till ten. But, me, it's kinda the same thing. Number one, that is really a hindrance, and so is the fifty takeoffs and fifty landings per year. That's, you know, I'm not able to use this thing once a week, but on top of it, you know, the once a week is actually probably okay. Problem I have is, you know, if I wanted to pick neighbors up and do flights to be a nice, friendly neighbor, there's a lot of new kids, and they all wanna go for a flight. I mean, they all bringing it up. Well, if I want, you know, I don't, I can fit, as far as adults, kids, you know, you're probably talking five. It's rated for seven, but comfortably five people in there, okay? You know, go do neighborhood flights, I'd probably have to do five flights in one day to go get the neighbors up real quick. Well, that eats up, act up ten percent of my uses right there, if I ever did something like that. And with the vast majority of my neighbors, and, you know, I'd like to let Bruce talk, too. Marty thought it'd be smart, but the amount of noise generated is so miniscule that every one of the neighbors that you have letters from would tell you that lawnmowers are louder and more, uh-
Take it to yours.
He's surprising me with that.
I did that here. With that one right there. Okay. I just-
I should've been out there with clubs. So, I just, I hear from all of these people in my neighborhood that I talk to how benign this is. And, you know, one other person I'd like to mention, I mean, he works for the game of fish. Mr. Brian Lubinski, you know, there was, at one point in time, he was against it and wrote a letter against it. I went down, talked to him. He's like, "All right. I see your points. I see whatever." Then he backed away. He wasn't for or against it during the last fall. I called him like a month ago, just to ask him, I truly wanted to know what his thoughts are. He's a very- are. He's a very honest, he's a great guy. Um, that was his word. Doug, it's benign, I don't even notice it. And everybody in that north neighborhood, Hunter's Crest, I think is the name of it, but everybody in that north neighborhood, you know, that's what, uh, Mr. Lubinski is part of, you know, they were the ones fighting against that northern approach departure path, and the two that were raising all the noise besides Elizabeth, they were raising the noise, they don't live there anymore. Um, when I use the west approach departure path, that approach departure path is way closer to Hunter's Crest than the north, so it was kind of ironic how they were fighting it so hard, trying to get rid of that north, when actually the west, if it wasn't impactful at all, it would be that one, that'd be more impactful. But on the west, I fly, um, pretty close to Brian's house. That was his words. Doug, it's benign, you don't even, don't even notice it, so. Either way, um, as far as the quantity of times and, uh, time a day, I, yeah, I mean, I would love for my use to be the same as any other use, whether it's a snowmobile or motorcycle or a car or...
What are you suggesting for use? Right now, you've got seven AM to seven PM. Are you, got any suggestions what you want to move that to?
Uh, you have in here that I gotta follow MNDOT and FAA regulations. That's what I would like it to be, if possible, um. Uh, what that would mean, I guess, I mean, it's gotta take, it's gotta be, if I'm gonna fly at night, it's gotta be certain types of conditions, you know, weather conditions with starlight and what have you, I need to be able to see the ground if I'm gonna fly at night to be legal as far as FAA goes. So, I'm not sure if, if, if someone can fire up a lawnmower past seven, why can't I bring in a helicopter? And maybe, maybe if it was gonna be at least till ten PM, okay? Would be, I mean, seven AM to ten PM is what, MPCA guidelines is daytime? That makes sense to me, but if we go down that path, I guess I would ask, maybe then four times a year, could I come in or go out beyond, uh, seven AM to ten PM? You know, it's not, I have very often...
It's a night...
At this date, I haven't flown different than those times ever in my life, but if, uh, if it was summertime, I was coming home from Nebraska, wherever I'm coming home from, and it's gonna be eleven o'clock, and I know that Bruce doesn't care, I know that the other closest guy, Luke Lovekey, he doesn't care, no one else hears me. Why, what's it matter, I guess? I don't know.
A question for, in my hearing, Doug, that, uh, you're, you're saying the seven seven, it's kind of eating your business at times?
Well, for sure, it does that as well, yeah. There's a time I flew to Duluth, uh, to visit a job site.
Kind of what you mentioned, the seven ten, would, an idea, the seven ten?
Seven AM, ten PM, yeah. To follow MPCA guidelines of daytime, yeah. That would be, I mean, it makes a heck of a lot more sense, especially in the summertime.
Does the morning, uh, create a problem for you, or?
No, I'm fine at seven AM.
Are any of these requirements, uh, for flying, are, are they ever for business? Are this expected for recreational or personal use?
False. Um...
Mr. Chair, Doug, would you be open to increasing, I know you are, increasing the number of times you can take off, so fifty?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure why it's limited, I guess, you know? I mean, I understand, there's a lot of people that, you know, I feel...
There's a lot of concern, and, and you saw, you heard, and, and, and the conditions, I think, reflect those concerns, not knowing, you know? And I think that that's part of it, so, so when we come back and review and look at this and say, what is the actual impact? And you only had twenty-five times that you could fly.
I didn't start flying out there until May.
Right, so that wasn't a full year, really, but...
It's been five, six months.
So, I think that that was part of that, and definitely...
Mr. Chair, that's a good point, that we really don't have a lot of seasoning here yet. New animal for us.
Right.
We're learning as much.
And, and I think that...
Of course, we want to make it accommodating, too.
Right, right, so, and that's part of this, that's part of this, this is, this is learning for everyone, the, the neighborhoods, the, um, for certainly the county, um, and then also for you, you know, and putting this in, in your, in your backyard, and how does that work, and, and that whole process? So, yeah, I, I, I think that that's what the flight restrictions started out with.
Uh-huh.
People were saying, well, you know, what's this gonna be like? And...
Right.
And I, you know, so I think that, you know, and, and you trying to use best practices in following these is, is a good thing because you're setting up a, uh, kind of a, a track record here on, on what the experience is and what people are saying. People would not be submitting these comments if they didn't, they didn't believe them.
Correct. Right.
Something, something else we need to remember is this is the first. We're pretty confident it's not gonna be the end of it. We're gonna have other folks who are gonna come forward requesting exactly what you've put, what you have done. And, so we have to establish a template, makes sense, county, you know, for land use, the safety of residents, a lot of issues that come to play, and we have to be able to configure it in a way that, you know, that we're putting, you know, five pounds in a five pound bag.
Uh-huh.
And so that's gonna work across the board.
Right.
And so, um, I think some of these decisions probably aren't going to change much.
Uh-huh.
Um, but maybe you want to go on and, and cover, uh, uh, thirteen and nineteen, I think those are the two I've got listed that you want to have removed.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, the county requiring of FAA and MNDOT follow those regulations, I mean, um, if people don't understand what it takes to get a MNDOT heliport, that's not easy. So, in the future, people that want to come in and get a heliport, for you to force them to use MNDOT guidelines is awesome, number one, because they're more stringent than the FAA, and if you follow the FAA guidelines, there's, there's never been an innocent bystander ever heard at an FAA approved heliport, and MNDOT's restrictions are more intense. So, I guess all I'm saying there is that, I mean, the fact that you guys put that in there makes this very difficult for people. They can't just go put in the middle of a bunch of trees and think that they're gonna be able to fly in and out of there.
You recommend we change the wording.
Which one? Sorry.
Change the wording on number thirteen. Now, we, we just refer, reference FAA recommended approvals for approach and departure.
All I'm talking about there would be, you guys are trying to keep me from using that north approach departure path again. Two main people that were pushing for that in that Hunter's Crest neighborhood no longer live there, um, but to, the FAA, if they were to come in here and talk to you, they'd tell you, don't ever do that, don't ever try and limit a pilot's ability to be safe.
I'm not sure we're doing that, so, I'm not sure we're saying you can't use that northern, northern approach, right?
No, but you're, I mean, you can see what Elizabeth did here, and number one, she's, she's lying and she's wrong, and I can prove it all, if she, we, but, uh, um, I think about it every time, not a big deal, I'm not really, I mean, I'm paying attention to it and trying to be cognitive of it, but if I'm up flying and I'm seeing the wind as a certain way, and I need to use the north to be the safest I can be, I'm using it, so, it's, I mean, you could leave it the way it is, um, it doesn't really affect anything.
And we're not gonna second guess you. You make the, you make the determination in the cockpit, and that's what you should be doing.
Exactly.
And, and so, and it's, you know, but...
It's kind of a non-factor.
Yeah, and that's, uh, I mean, that's, that's the reality of that, you know, and that you work to accommodate that is good, first from a neighborhood sense, but, but you have to make the decision in the cockpit.
Correct.
First flex here.
What's that?
First flexible, you know, we're not...
Yeah.
Be hard-nosed here.
No, not at all, I, yep, no, I, that doesn't really affect anything.
Mr. Chair, when I look at your flight records, where you're flying, you're trying to adhere to the south, and coming from, going south and going north, from the south alignment, so you're trying to do that as much as you can.
Right.
Watching that the weather allows that to happen.
Now, we're gonna get into winter, and it's gonna be more north wind, so I'm taking on...
But when I look at this, you're, you're following as much as you can.
For sure, I have, the last thing I want is to see anybody with anything negative, negative on that. I want to be able to use my heliport, and I don't, you know, I'm not here to be infringing upon anyone, I don't want anybody to even know I'm there, just, so, yes, I want to do everything I can to not have any negative on that toward it, I guess.
But, Mr. Chair, if we lighten up a little bit on the hours and maybe even some of the number of flights, I can, we'll look at this again a year from now, for us to see if there's any more issues that come up, and, yeah.
From the expansion, if we would change...
If, if we do.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. And, and, um, let's move down to the nineteenth one, uh, I think you had a concern on that one, and that's true. Nineteen's not a big deal either, um, but I can tell you, there's, there's been a time where I flew in and my helipad was being worked on, and I didn't realize they were supposed to be there at that specific time, so there was guys working on the helipad, and I landed next to it, you know, I've got fifty-some acres right there, it's not that big a deal, but theoretically, that's the only thing I've ever done that would be a violation of the terms of UPA.
Right.
So, yes, I'm always gonna land on the helipad that's there, there's no reason for me not to, but I, just being flat on, if there's one time where I landed right next to it, because there's...
And, and again, that's the type of thing that I look at, that, that, to say, this is what happened, that's not something that we're going to, and staff would, in my mind, uh, go after and say, oh, you're not following this and stuff.
Right.
You know, so that's, and I think that a lot of this is, um, you know, any type of thing where you're, you're trying to work something out like this, that it takes a little bit of understanding on both sides to get there with it, and, and being reasonable about things, and, 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 uh, you know, I live not far from you, and I've seen you three times in a year, which, and, you know, just, just looked up and noticed it, and that, it, it's true, it's not, you know, from my, where I'm at, it's not a big deal, so...
Right.
Um, but it is good to see, and when I read this report and we read your comment, it is good to hear back, after last November, we were sitting in this room with a lot of people concerned, a lot of your neighbors, and, and, um, and so, it's very good for us to hear, um, and on this, and, and, you know, frankly, I think that, that if this record isn't built, and if we hadn't built this record, it'd be much more difficult to continue to justify anything, you know what I mean? So, I think that that's important, so that's my, my thing.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, the vast majority of this is, I mean, it's all just fine, um, but I guess the main thing I would ask for some thoughts on and to be thinking about are definitely the hours and the amount of times per year I can use this thing.
Right.
Um, other than that, everything, everything's good.
Well, we appreciate hearing your comments too, and your honesty about this, you know, because, sure, it's an important thing for us to hear that, too.
This was an exciting event. Went on forever.
I know, I hope it's, uh, we wanted to be less excited at times. Hope we're just, we're being stuck now.
We're being a little cautious, and I think we need to be, as I said, we're, we can be flexible to a point, but we need to hold the line on certain issues that we have to deal with here with an ordinance and a conditional use permit. We want to be consistent, and, you know, so if we nail you, it's for a good reason.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Any other comments? Um, if you guys want to hear from Bruce at all, or? Sure. If you want to, I'll see you.
Sure.
If you're okay, Bruce. So, Greg, would you mind pulling up the property again, to see exactly where Bruce lives again?
Which residence is yours, Bruce?
I'm the one about a hundred feet from the helipad, so...
Are you the one who had the picture from your window?
Yeah.
That's your house, that's, so that's you, in your house, okay.
Yep, yeah, and...
Thank you very much.
So, as part of, as part of the last COVID, I, I'm a healthcare worker, and I've been a hundred percent from home over the last year and a half, so, um, I can attest that the impact from Doug's helicopter has been very minimal. In fact, my office is on the, on the southernmost part of my home, I don't know if you can zoom in and kind of see, actually where his helipad is, just beyond those, those, the corner of my lot, so the helipad is actually right, right there, so, and then you can see on the south part of my home, there's a little off, uh, extension, that's my office.
Oh, okay.
So, during one of his takeoffs, I was in a, a conference call with work, I was in a Zoom meeting, and, and I said, oh, look, the helicopters, and I held my laptop up so that the people could actually see the helicopter take off, but they couldn't hear it. So, it, it's really very unintrusive for, you know, and no one anywhere near as close to my home, and so...
Yeah, your house is close, by far.
Yeah, by far. And, and I can also comment, on Saturday's flight, so, the, the flight, actually, I think they're referring to when he landed from the north, I actually was videotaping from the ground, so I think you could probably review that and verify his flight path, if you would like.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Do you have any questions for me, or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, well, um, thank you very much for that. We'll consider this further, and, and, uh, if we're gonna move forward on any change or anything, obviously, there'll be notifications.
Yes, and obviously, Mr. Chief would need to request that amendment to his permit, so that request would come from him and work its way through here through the public hearing. Uh, before you go, Doug, if you could tell me which one of these flights that, because we're, we're gonna need to get back to her, um, that, that you didn't fly that day?
I have records of some of those too, because they turn it all in.
Yeah, I think it falls off, it falls, early October.
Yeah, you heard numbers, so the one that were me, or two and five were me, that is me five.
So, we gotta wait a minute.
One, three, and four was not me. I was talking about... There's never been another helicopter.
This is actually a public hearing, so did anyone else want to make comments on it before we close the public hearing? Seen anyone running for, for podium? I, I looked at, uh, for, are there any motions for close public hearing?
A move.
So, move. First, your hubris, second, by Chris, we're all in favor, would I?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, now we have the planning manager update, and I'm sure Marty will be presenting that. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we had a number of conditional use permits go to the board in the last month. We have the five conditional use permits that you guys heard in, uh, in the Fieldstone Industrial Park. Four of those conditional use permits went to the board on October eighteen, nineteenth, um, that included the, that included the JS Land Outdoor Storage for the Contractor Yard, it included, uh, Green Automotive, which is the auto repair business, uh, also M and A Industries, which was a truck repair, uh, facility, and then, uh, John Mason Brink's, uh, Contractor Yard, who's gonna be leasing spaces to other uses. On November second, GNS Truck and Trailer went to the board, uh, that one was delayed a little bit because we got another letter from the attorney representing the neighbors on that one prior to board action, so we wanted to clear all that with our county attorney's office before bringing it forward, so it got delayed a couple of weeks. Also, on the second, we had a rezoning of eighty acres from A one to A three, uh, by B.J. Halloran, uh, section twenty-eight of Belle Plaine Township. We also had an interim use permit for a mobile home for an infirm parent, Gregory and Mary Woodgate, in section twenty-six of Helena Township. That is all I have.
Okay, any questions for?
Hey, oh, I have one question, Marty, on that, um, on the Mason Brink, uh, business part, um, is that, uh, letter, that legal letter from, uh, Mark and Hoffman, or what went down above, you know?
Oh, obviously, they were representing three of the property owners.
I mean, we know there's an issue, but...
Yeah, our, our attorney's office did take a close look at what their... Yeah, I, our attorney's office did take a close look at what their, uh, they were claiming in their letter, they did advise that we remove any car sales on the Green Automotive, um, conditional use permit, this board recommended you could have up to five vehicles for sale at one time, our attorney's office recommended we remove that condition, so he has not allowed any car sales from that lot.
Okay.
Uh, they also closely looked at the use on, um, the GNS Truck and Trailer Repair, um, because the whole aspect of the trucking company not being a use that was listed in our use table twenty dash four.
Right.
Um, so they wanted to make sure that this fit within the Truck and Trailer Repair, uh, line, and was not necessarily a trucking company, so that, that was the reason for the delay there, so, yes, the, the attorney's office did take a close look at that, those, uh, those letters.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Marty, are, why does the attorney not wanna have the five vehicles for sale there, is, or?
Well, our, our county attorney concurred with, with the Mark and Hoffman attorney that the specific overrode the general, so the, because we didn't specifically allow car sales, they, they felt that car sales weren't allowed within this area. We have heard from the developer, John Masonbrink, and Mr. Larson, that they are going to be making application to amend table twenty dash board, to include trucking companies and include outdoor parking of semi, uh, outdoor parking of semi tractor trailers, uh, so that will probably be coming forward to this board at some point over the winter months, we have not received that application as of yet, they just wanna avoid these types of.
Right.
Um, issues coming forward as, as they bring additional, uh, uses into the park.
Good, okay, anything else? Thank you very much for your report, uh, motion to adjourn, someone?
Move to.
Second. Motion by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Huber, all in favor, would I, right? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Barb?